Lot of familiar faces, Mayor.
Been here, done this daily, it seems like.
That's us.
A couple times a day.
Yeah.
That's right.
Hi, Katie.
Good afternoon. How's everybody today?
Well.
You?
Good.
All right, we are recording and broadcasting. The floor is yours.
Great, thank you. Good afternoon. This is a special meeting of the City of Morro Bay City Council. It is Wednesday, May 26, 2021, 3:00 p.m. This meeting is being held via teleconference, and I'll ask the city clerk if you'll establish a quorum, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Addis?
Here.
Councilmember Barton?
Here.
Councilmember Davis?
I am present.
Councilmember Heller?
Here.
And Mayor Hey.
Present. So we do have a quorum. I'll call the meeting to order pursuant to Section 3 of Executive Order N. 29-20 issued by Governor Newsom on March 17, 2020. This meeting will be conducted telephonically through Zoom and broadcast live on cable channel 20 and streamed on the city website. Please be advised that pursuant to the executive order and to ensure the health and safety of the public by limiting human contact that could spread the COVID-19 virus, Veterans Hall will not be open for this meeting. Thank you. Welcome back. This is a continuation of a special meeting on our budget that started yesterday at 3:00 p.m. Tuesday. We are continuing with council member follow-up questions, and I think Ms. Lictig is with us here. Katie, welcome back. And I don't know if you want to start with any presentation or follow-up information you may want to share with us?
Yes, we would like to do that. We've got a lot of help from our friends in the departments to answer most, if not all, the questions that were posed to us yesterday. And so if it's okay with the mayor, I'd like to share my screen.
Absolutely.
So that I can...
Thank you.
...share the PowerPoint. Well, I did that too soon. There we go. So here we are on the 26th. Even updated the PowerPoint for you. So I'm just going to run through these slides to cover the material that we identified as wanting follow-up on. This is the plan that's presented in the budget for the American Rescue Plan Act, which is ARPA, which is coming from the federal government to try to alleviate some of the impacts of the... on our revenues from COVID impacts. As you see in this slide, we're on the revenue side, which is on the left-hand side of the slide. We're estimating that we'll get $990,000 in the current fiscal year, but as you can see, we don't have any planned expenditures in the current fiscal year. And then we'll receive another $990,000 from the state for the purposes of additional alleviations of the impacts. On the right side is the proposed uses in the next fiscal year. There was a question about whether we were planning and programming only $500,000. The $500,000 is going towards the General Fund Emergency Reserve, and these are the other expenditures that we're planning for next year. And so that totals eight hun... I'm sorry, $484,540. And that gets us to $984,540, which is slightly less than what is being planned to be received this year. And then the staff's recommendation is that at mid-year next year, the council could appropriate any funds from next year's expenditures or revenues that are going to be received. Those won't be received until about this time next year. So you could identify a plan for the next fiscal year, which is '22-'23, or you could wait until the budget process for '22- '23. And that'll be a decision that you'll make together with the new Administrative Services Director, Assistant City Manager, and the City Manager. So that's the first slide. The next slide was... is about the Veterans Hall project, and there was a question about how much money is set aside. It's $156,908 in total. Some of these dollars, the 117,628, which is the second line, is coming from the public education and government channel fees that we receive from the cable companies, and that is limited to ensuring that the technology is available to broadcast the meetings to make them more accessible to the public. A question was asked about the timing of the audio and visual improvements in the Vets Hall, and we mentioned last night that there's not a specific timing. There's actually a meeting tomorrow with AGP Video to try to scope out what could be done at the Vets Hall. And so as soon as there's additional information, we'll provide that to the council and the community. There was a question about cost recovery in our recreation programs. And in 2015, the city adopted its fee schedules and some cost recovery policies. And this pyramid identifies from zero cost recovery to 100% cost recovery, what types of expectations there are for the levels of cost recovery. So as an example, in the 80% to 100%, which is the green level that's right in the middle, which is the Roman numeral four, is 80 to 100% would be contract instructions, adult sports, and trips. And down at zero is special events like the tree lighting, Morro Bay Sings, spaghetti dinner, teen center in the skate park. I don't honestly know if all of those things continue to happen from 2015, but those are the types of events that are broadly available to the community. And then, as I mentioned yesterday, the facilities rental shall be 100% cost recovery, and it could be even up to 100% of market rate if the council so desired. The question about the intersection improvements at Highway 141 were raised yesterday. This is an outline of the potential roundabout option. And then the next question was asked about how much is unfunded. And so in your book, this is a picture of what is included in your budget book. I don't know the exact page. It's in the capital section. And the numbers that are in red going forward are the ones that are unfunded. So it's the... on the bottom, the expenditures, the $1.9 million and the $5.6 added together. A question was asked about cybersecurity, and the term didn't come to us. It's phishing, where somebody pretends like they're a legitimate source, and they may be sending an email from the city manager, which I have received on behalf... it wasn't the city manager, unfortunately. I didn't click it. I knew better than that. But sometimes they make themselves up to be the mayor, or the city manager, or myself, a bank. We receive a lot of those. And it's called phishing, or social engineering, where somebody's taking the place of another human being. The city's spam filter and other software helps to prevent the attacks. It's not foolproof, unfortunately. And so as a... what I call belts and suspenders, so that they keep our pants on really well. So you have a belt and you have your suspenders. We do have cyber privacy and network security liability coverage through the California Joint Powers Insurance Authority. And up on the screen is the types of support and coverage that we have. A million-dollar limit with a $50,000 deductible. And then staff would propose that we add a key projects to the budget under the Information Technology Department is to implement cybersecurity training programs for all city staff, including elected and appointed officials, as well as contractors and volunteers. So that might mean other advisory body members, but anybody who has a city email address that gets used. And it is a best practice for commissioners and elected officials to use their city email addresses for purposes of record-keeping. And so we would propose with the council's concurrence that we add that to the adopted budget for your consideration. The development review process, we were asked if the addition of the staff would help streamline or speed up the process, and the answer was yes, definitely. There are some other things on the screen that identify other streamlining processes, softwares, and improvements that we could implement that include streamlining that happened last night with the adoption of the general plan and the local coastal plan and the zoning code, which will happen in the summertime. Again, it streamlines and clarifies policies so that it's not reinventing the wheel every time a permit comes in. We're opening up the City Works software application for a web portal, which will allow the applications to be submitted online. Moving forward, we're planning to move our City Works off our city servers and provide that with off-site servers, which reduces our maintenance costs. It's more secure. It's better redundancy. And updates are implemented more quickly and reduces the burden on our very limited IT staff, who's done a tremendous job at doing so many things. But really, at some point, we have to think about whether we're better off having some of those services provided off-site. We're also doing a plan check application. We've identified that. We're permitting... where the permitting process goes mostly paperless. And again, this will take some time because we have to get the City Works transitioned to the online service or the off-site service. And last but not least, our amazing Planning Commissioner Subcommittee has been identified to help assist with the development review process improvements. A question was asked about the freezer at the Vets Hall. The short answer is thus far we've not been able to identify a safe and practical location either in or at the Vets Hall site. And staff will follow up with the group that was requesting that this week. A question was asked about whether there was funding specifically for utility bill abatement and helping people pay their utility bills in the American Rescue Plan Act. The short answer is yes, there is. We think it's going to be administered by the state of California. The unfortunate part is that there's $500 million, which seems like a lot of money, but there are 7 million households that qualify as low income in the United States, and many think that that's growing. And we're hopeful that that will come to Morro Bay residents if they need it, but we're still awaiting input and guidance from the state of California, who will be administering the program. It was requested that we have a listing of the water fund capital projects, and this is provided to meet that need. And if we need to go back to it, we can when that conversation comes up. There's a number of policy reviews that we'd like to propose based on last night's discussion, get added to key projects. So in addition to the one I discussed earlier, we would propose the Finance Department add researching after a review by CFAC recommendations about the advisability of an IRS 115 trust for future payments of pension costs. I just wanted to make sure that we raise the question about whether the council wanted us to also add that the research project include evaluation of an irrevocable trust for other post-employment benefits, unfunded liability. And I can go into more detail about that if you'd like. It's been a conversation that has come up at CFAC before, and I believe that it's a prudent evaluation to have. I don't want to opine about whether it's a good idea or a bad idea, but it seemed like this might be an appropriate place to add that to the key projects if the council wanted to. And then the Finance Department would assist CFAC as needed with the evaluation of the city's council's compensation review. There are a number of policies that were raised yesterday, and I won't go through each of these individually now. But we've put on slides the major components of each of those policies. And so when the council wishes to have those conversations, we certainly can do it. It relates to general fund, the risk management fund, water and sewer, long-term financial planning, as well as a revenue policy that identifies that new revenue, discretionary revenue should be used for one-time purposes. And I wanted to point out that we are anticipating cannabis revenues coming into the city, but we've also identified more one-time uses than cannabis revenues. So we are compliant with that policy, but I just wanted to make sure that that was identified. And this is just the sewer fund, the harbor fund, and duplicate. And so the key question for the city council this evening, or this afternoon, is do you have any input or directions on the proposed operating capital, Measure E and Q budgets in anticipation for the June 22nd, 2021 budget adoption? And so that concludes the presentation of the information that was requested by council yesterday, and your staff's available to continue that dialogue.
Okay, thank you, Katie, for comprehensive follow-up on... I think all the questions were captured that were asked yesterday. I appreciate that very much. So before us, council, first, I wanted to go ahead and open a public comment before we get into any further discussion today. We've had one session of public comment, but public comment is now open for the special meeting. This is public comment for items on this special meeting agenda only. The information is on the screen about how to access that. If you're accessing via Zoom, please be sure you use the raise hand function so that we know to recognize you. If you're calling by telephone, please use star nine to let us know you'd like to raise your hand and speak. So public comment is now open for items on this special agenda only. Do we have any public comment, Madam Clerk?
Um...
Or I should say Bob. Bob's with us today.
Not seeing anybody raise the hand at this point. If you would like to speak on public comment, we'll give you one more opportunity to raise hand. And appears not.
All right. Thank you. I'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the council. First off, wanted to find out if any of you had done a deep dive late last night and had further questions above and beyond the questions that were asked and the information that was provided by Katie now. I'd like to do that first, and then, second, address the questions that staff has on feedback from last... yesterday afternoon. So, yes, Councilmember Addis, thank you. I see your hand. Go ahead, please.
I just have a brief one added to my list of revenue generation. I guess it was property sales. And I know that council had decided on sale of one property, and I was just wondering where that... where we were at in that process. And I can take the answer at a different time. It doesn't have to be right now.
Katie, you want that for a later date, or do you know now?
I don't know the answer off the top of my head, so I'd appreciate it if we could answer separately.
Absolutely.
And then one other question is around garbage. And I know that we have additional service down on the Embarcadero, and if we have long-term plans to keep that service in place, or if it's sort of season by season to look at how much we need to continue those services or not. And I can take that answer at a later time as well.
I think we might actually be able to answer that one for you. And it's a pretty quick one. And I'm just going to ask Eric if he wants to pop in and supplement. But I do think that we do seasonal increases of garbage disposal services. We're finding that there isn't really much of a shoulder season anymore. In the last 18 months, it really has changed the patterns down on the Embarcadero. So my understanding is that we are planning long-term to continue to fund at the level that we have in the last year, and that's at a higher level than we had in the past. And Eric, feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, or add any color commentary.
Good afternoon. No, no, no color commentary. Just, you know, we do increase over the summer season to six days a week from, I think, four or five from the wintertime. We have added more trash cans, more dumpsters. A lot of that was a result of COVID and reaction to the takeout and that big increase. So it's going to be interesting to see how this year plays out, because we're still kind of in a COVID year. We're not sure where we're going to be. More visitors, but maybe not as much takeout. So we'll see how it works. And then I think we've got some additional funding for staff to increase service levels, more in the restrooms than trash, but just trying to throw some more staff time at it.
Thank you. That's it for me.
Thank you, Councilmember Addis. Any other hands up? Questions that arose during your deep sleep last evening, or lack thereof? As follow-up, looking for hands. I see none.
I have.
Ah, there it is. Councilmember Heller, yes, sir. I said deep sleep or lack thereof. Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, so in looking, I did take a deep dive this morning, actually, through a lot of these things. So this is kind of a random list of questions, but I was looking at the expenditure for Harbor Patrol boat on P.E. 4. And I got a little confused, because I know that there's a fundraising campaign for a boat. Maybe Eric or someone could clarify whether there's two boats, or whether we're raising money for one boat, or if you can clarify that, I'd appreciate it.
No, it's the one boat, Councilmember Heller, the Port San Luis surplus boat. And the fundraising is still currently underway. They're starting to push about $55,000 now.
Okay, and you're looking for $100,000, is that right?
Well, that was their goal, their initial goal. Whether they'll reach it or not, we're proposing to move forward without them getting to $100,000. If they do, great. Less city funds we have to expend, but that's their goal, and they're still pursuing it.
So do you have a deadline on when you're going to not collect funds anymore and just go ahead and get the boat, or?
Well, I think, I mean, we've purchased the boat from Port San Luis. Now it's the funding to get it operational for us, repower. And so I don't think... the Friends group intends to stop fundraising. I mean, they're going to continue to fundraise as long as they're a group for the department, for our needs. Whether they'll stop targeting the boat at some point is yet to be seen, but they're going to continue for the foreseeable future.
Okay. The next question has to do with the ARPA funding and the interim rules. So the budget that you presented, Katie, for '21-'22, is are all of those expenditures contingent upon you getting the rules that will be coming from the federal government? I mean, is it a possibility that that... that the expenditures might be reduced or increased depending on when you actually get the rules?
I think that the bottom line is that it may change, but we won't be spending anything less than what we receive. So we'll make some amendments to where we're spending money for items, but it does appear that all the capital expenditures, the vehicles and other things like that are definitely, at least from my reading, are definitely allowed. Under the ARPA, the only question mark relates to the general fund contribution to replenish the GFR. Sorry, not general fund, but the GFR. So my anticipation is that we'll hopefully get some additional guidance before... hopefully long before, but before the 22nd. And if we haven't, and we're basing it on the guidelines that were issued by Treasury in May, in early May, then we'll present to the council an alternative funding strategy.
Okay. My next question has to do with replacement vehicles. I'm always shocked at what new vehicles cost. Do we have a replacement vehicle policy, or is it department-by-department evaluation? I mean, I personally drive my cars until the wheels fall off, so I don't know that the city should do that necessarily. But I'm wondering how the decisions are made as to whether or not to replace a vehicle or to continue to bear it.
Well, at the current time, it appears to be a department-by-department policy that drives the requests and drives the standard by which we judge whether it's time to replace or not. I would say that, at least my experience is, is that the fire department has a replacement schedule. I think all the departments in the next year will be working on them. The police department has made requests in the past to replace vehicles that were not able to be afforded at the time. And so that's why there's two vehicles to be replaced in this current fiscal... in the coming fiscal year, and then one more in the out year. And my hope is, is that the city will develop that more comprehensive policy, but it has been dispersed among the departments up until this time.
Okay. I see Chief Knuckles has joined us. You have something to chime in with?
You do, sir. And I'm with you. I think we should use our vehicles till we can't use them anymore. And... but some vehicles, the missions are when they have to drive Code Three. You know, when they have to drive Code Three, we can't have those little bugs like we would have with our own vehicles, and we can tolerate, because we're dealing with the employee's safety and the public's safety when we're driving Code Three. And I'm beginning to learn through my old age that with cars, it's not about miles, it's about years, because it's the... NFPA does have recommendations. We don't have to follow them. They always say that the vehicle should be placed at five years. So I disagree with that. I think it could go 10 years. And our command vehicles go 10 years, because after 10 years, that's when electronics start breaking. We start having issues with the plastic parts, the computer parts for the vehicle. So I totally agree with you that we should run them to the ground and to usefulness, but we also have to put safety on the side of it. And if I'm not mistaken, I think the vehicle that we're looking to replace is way over 10 years, and it's, I think, 138,000 miles, but those are Code Three miles. So they're not easy miles.
Thank you for that explanation. I appreciate that. Let's see the other questions. Speaking of vehicles, so I don't know if this is the time and place to talk about these kinds of things, Mayor, but the trolley service seems to be fairly underutilized to me. Most... I mean, even on busy days, I don't see too many people riding it. It's a nice feature to have it. And I think I saw that that new trolley is over $400,000, but maybe I was looking at the wrong page. But at what point in time do we evaluate the trolley service or the Morro Bay Transit, the local bus, the on-call service, as to whether or not those are services that we need to continue to provide? So I don't know. It's just a general question.
No, I think that's a valid question for now. And also, perhaps adding with regard to the replacement costs, where the funds are coming from, if they're grants from the RTA or what have you, maybe... I don't know if we can answer that now. Scott's here. I see Scott.
Yeah, typically, those vehicles are purchased entirely from transportation funds, non-city funds. And great point, though, about utilization. I think that's... I think that's something that Janine monitors. Janine Berlin-Gaiman, our analyst in Public Works, monitors. And they're making some modifications to the routes planned for the summer to account for some of the low ridership that we see in other parts of town. But it's a fair point, and it's something I think they're gonna be continuing to look at. But Rob, is that correct, that they are funded through transportation entirely? I want to make sure I got that right.
That's what it looks like from, yeah, go ahead, Rob.
That is correct. They're funded through a combination of user rates and transportation fees that we get in the LTF, Local Transportation Fund. The purchase of new vehicles is typically funded through grant programs, and the match is made up by the LTF, so the Local Transportation Fund. We keep the two transit in separate funds, so we have a bus system and a trolley system, so they're accounted for differently. And yes, there has, we have evaluated ridership in the past periodically, and have made adjustments to those routes to make sure that we're as efficient as possible with the routes.
Yeah, that, go ahead, Katie.
Sorry. I was gonna say, the only other suggestion, if it was the desire of the council to make that a priority for the staff in the coming year, that it could be added as a key project, if you wanted to.
You know, in thinking about the circulation element, the general plan and so forth, I had the idea that it might be cool to have a bus service on Main Street from one end to the other that was, that would run all day, that might get people out of their cars, and they could use that service to get to work, you know, if they're working locally, as opposed to getting in their cars. So just kind of looking at what's the most efficient and most effective and most important elements of our transit system should we be looking at for future needs. So that's just kind of a general question. Thanks for tolerating that. Let's see here, okay. So I'm looking at a lot of unfunded Public Works projects, which I appreciate very much that they're so well-described and listed in this book. It's very, very helpful to see them. But, you know, when you see them en masse like this, it's pretty overwhelming. I'm assuming that the council will be thinking at a gold time or sooner about how to fund some of these things. The one specific one that I would like to talk about that is funded is the pavement management plan, which looks like we have about $4 million per year for that. And Rob, I'm wondering if, you can give me a thumbnail sketch of kind of what we typically get for that $4 million for, in terms of work that we can complete, and how much you anticipate we would need to keep our PCI level from slipping further?
Sure. I think the expenditure might be closer to in the $700,000 to $800,000 per year.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we would be made whole if it were $4 million.
$4 million a year would be, that would, is what our pavement management plan suggests that we need to do to increase the average PCI, pavement condition index, to the statewide goal of 70, on a scale of 0 to 100. The city of Morro Bay sits currently at about an average PCI of 64, with a estimated service life for our streets at about 15 years left in the streets. What we get for that $700,000 to $800,000 that we would expend on an average basis on the streets is probably about seven miles of street pavement preservation or sealing, like chip seal, micro-surfacing, triple-layer capes, that type of work. If we were going to do actual pavement restoration or dig a street up and repair it, we might get somewhere less than a mile of street work done. Reconstruction is about $8 to $10 a square foot to do that work, whereas the pavement preservation, that basically buys us some time, is in the neighborhood of $0.50 to, you know, a buck and a half a square foot. So we've been very prudent with our pavement dollars in trying to stretch those dollars as much as possible across the city. This next year, what we'll be looking at doing is a stopgap project. Our arterial street, Main Arterial Street, which is Main Street, is showing signs of sections of pavement failure. They need to be dug up and reconstructed. So we're proposing to spend about $700,000 on not a lot of work, but it will, Main Street carries a lot of traffic. Some sections carries, you know, upwards of 10,000 vehicles per day. So we need to make sure that our arterial is in good shape. And then later on in the year, we will likely seal that street, so to preserve those areas that we've reconstructed.
Okay. Thank you for that. Those are my questions at this point. Thank you, Mayor.
Hey, Councilmember Heller, thank you for doing that deep dive again. I appreciate that very much. You might want to consider, if you're driving those personal vehicles to where the wheels fall off, you might need the trolley.
That's when I will need it.
Other questions, in addition to the information that's been presented today? Any new questions? Looking for hands, seeing none. Katie, I had just a couple of follow-up issues. One, with regard to the review of policies. And thank you for putting on the screen or screenshots of those policies and brief content information. I note that our general fund emergency reserve, in essence, does not contain within it coverage for dollars that flow into the general fund from either Measure E or Measure Q. And so as part of the review, I'm just noting that in fiscal year, the draft budget '21-'22, that about $1,858 of expenditures that support general fund departments flow in from Measure E and Q. And if you looked at that, you would need, according to our current target, about $520,000 of additional general fund emergency reserve to cover those general operations. And so my concern is that we're woefully underfunded, not only in addition to the comments I made yesterday, but with regard to the significant dollars now that are coming into the general fund from Measure E and Q. So what I'm asking or suggesting is that we, in our review of the specific policy associated with that, and I think it's 89-18 or what have you, I think that's the general reserve one, that we include this consideration in that and have a discussion about that. Then I was thinking about perhaps what the best methodology is. I don't think it would be prudent for us to do the review of our financial policies after we approve the budget, and we're obviously very close to getting that done. So I'm wondering if council, and Chris, I see you're here as well, and helped me think this through, if council would be interested in appointing a subcommittee to work with finance very quickly to do a quick review of the policies that were mentioned, and if that were something that needed to be agendized at a regular city council meeting, Chris, or if there was agreement on the part of council to do that, how we might be able to make that happen prior to budget approval?
Sure. So the special meeting agenda provides that it'll be a study session on operating and capital budget. Says, you know, receive proposed fiscal year general fund operating and capital budget, provide feedback prior to the budget adoption. I think that what you're proposing is captured within the agenda listing to establish a subcommittee, if the council is so inclined.
Okay. Sure, Katie, go ahead.
I was just gonna ask Chris how he felt about if the ad hoc committee was established, that we bring the recommended changes back with the budget adoption and have that be clearly identified as one of the recommendations to modify so that we wouldn't have to rush necessarily to get it on the June 8th agenda, which seems pretty untenable, just from a timing perspective. And so I've seen it done before, where it's adopt the budget, adopt the capital budget, and then direct staff to modify this policy to say this, and this policy to say that.
And my concern is, and thank you, Katie, for that, is that as an example, if the general fund emergency reserve number is set at a different level, that that would need to be budgeted for, and it would be after the fact that the policy would be reviewed. And I'm just potentially thinking, hey, or maybe we wouldn't be recommending that. But I think I've laid out a significant concern for what I consider to be an underfunded emergency reserve. And that's one of the specific policies I'd really like to see reviewed prior. Now, I do realize this is May, gosh, 26th. And so, Chris, help me think through how we could accomplish this if there is agreement on the part of the council to have, I think I cited just four policies to review that I think are significant with regard to the budget, if there's agreement on reviewing those prior to with a subcommittee. And I'd be happy to volunteer as one of the members.
Well, the speed at which the subcommittee reviews and provides a recommendation, either to modify policies or to maintain the status quo, would be up to, you know, the subcommittee, how quickly they could work. And then when it would come back to council, if the imperative is to make sure it's done before the new fiscal year budget's adopted on June 22nd, then, you know, it could be done on June 22nd, it could be done at a special meeting. And I don't see any legal issues with if need be, it's done after June 22nd. It seems that there is a desire to make sure that the policies are reconciled with the new budget before it's adopted, but that's not a legal issue. I mean, you know, the policies can be amended at any point during the calendar year.
So I've done a review of the policies, and I don't think, I'm talking about significant, major changes that will take a long time, but I do think potentially, in my opinion, that there will be an impact on the budget, and that if we could accomplish it prior to the budget approval, it may just be one meeting, actually, of a subcommittee of two council members that could do that review with staff.
Sure. I see that this is, you know, the way it's being presented as appears to be an integral part of, you know, what the new fiscal year '21-'22 budget would be. And so, you know, it's entirely appropriate to establish a subcommittee and, you know, go ahead and, you know, tentatively schedule something on the calendar for when that subcommittee would bring back proposed recommendations, which would just simply be a function of, you know, how quick the subcommittee and staff could pull it together.
Would you need a formal motion now, Chris, or just head nod, agreement, and volunteers?
I'd do best to formally approve the creation of the new subcommittee and just memorialize it, so at least by minute order, that's done. And then folks could volunteer, or, you know, folks could be recommended for who wants to be on it.
Then I'll go ahead and make a motion to create a subcommittee of two council members to review the policies that I articulated last, yesterday afternoon, and that Katie presented today with regard to the information, and bring it back to council prior to the, or along with the budget for consideration of implementing any changes that were recommended.
I'll second that, Mayor.
Okay, so motion by Mayor Hedy, second by Councilmember Heller. Katie, yes, question?
Could I just get clarity about the scope of the committee? Because I understand the reconciliation of the policies, but I'm having a hard time connecting that with changing the budget.
Okay.
And how that would work before June 22nd.
So as an example, again, I'll use the same example. If the committee reviewed the general fund emergency reserve levels that were set and changed that number to a higher number, that would impact how much you would have to set aside in the budget for the general fund emergency reserve?
So we would be, in that case, looking at cutting from the budget. So is that sort of the implication? I just want to make sure. So then staff is gonna have to come up with options to cut things that are proposed in the operating or capital.
Perhaps not. It may be something that could occur over time. You know, it wouldn't have to necessarily impact the budget all at once. And I don't want to presume what the outcome will be, because, you know, the committee needs to be, look at it and then make recommendations.
I think the city manager and I just want to make sure that we understand what the will of the council is, so that we're successful at needing that. Right now, at least, we've programmed all but about $30,000 in the general fund. We've programmed just about all of the Measure E and Q money, and we've programmed all of the first year of the American Rescue Plan Act money, with the understanding that we may have to make some adjustments based on the Treasury regulations. So I think to the city manager's point, there's not a lot of leeway to do it immediately in this current fiscal year, or the coming fiscal year, without making some major modifications. That's where I was getting hung up, is you saying that we'd come back with proposed changes to the budget.
Yeah, perhaps there wouldn't be, we couldn't immediately impact the budget, that may well be true. I don't want to get into too much discussion on the emergency reserve fund, because I don't want to cede anything, that'd be inappropriate for me to do. So perhaps my motion really would be to review those policies, bring it back, and update them, and not worry too much about the implications immediately on the budget. Does that help?
Yeah, it does a lot.
But we do say per policy that we are gonna review those on an annual basis, and we haven't done it for a couple of years, so I think it's important.
Mayor, if I could suggest, I just checked the council policies and procedures, and the section on council subcommittees says that the council should define the purpose, parameters, and duration of the subcommittee. I think that we've loosely done that, but just to clarify, you know, those are the three criteria. It sounds like the duration is simply to bring back some recommendations, and then that's the end of it.
Recommended, any recommendation for changes on the policies that were outlined? I have my list here somewhere, but you have the list from yesterday.
Purpose and parameters seem clear.
Right, and to bring back any recommended changes for those policies that would be necessary. And the duration would be short-term, probably one or two meetings, to bring them back fairly quickly for review by staff and council.
To be clear, just so everyone's on the same page, I believe that you're referring to policies that have been adopted by resolution. You know, for example, enterprise fund accumulation reserve policy, et cetera. And so it would be resolutions and possible amendments to the policies that may come back.
Yeah, 46-18, 85-18, 89-18, and 9-19.
And we just added 19-19, because we thought that that might be relevant for the county's review or the council's review, so.
Yeah, and I don't, again, I don't want to belabor the issue about getting into the details of the policy, obviously.
Yeah, yeah.
But we do have a motion and a second. And again, I would volunteer, and I'll leave the motion as it is, and then look for volunteers after that, how's that? How's that? Is there any further questions about the motion or? Okay, see, none, I'll go ahead and call the question in. A roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
And Mayor Heding?
Yes.
Motion carries by vote.
Do we have any volunteers?
I would like to be, I would like to do it, but I'm going to be out of town next week. So I don't know if that'll work.
I have, Councilmember Davis has his hand up. I appreciate that. Chris, do we need a formal motion on that or volunteers? Do you need us to appoint?
It would be best, sorry, it's the attorney and me if we just had a minute or.
That's why I asked you.
Counsel approving you, it sounds like, and then whoever else has been volunteered or assigned to it.
Councilmember Heller, would you like to make a motion?
I move that Mayor Heding and Councilmember Davis constitute a subcommittee.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Heller, seconded by Councilmember Addis for a subcommittee consisting of myself and Councilmember Davis. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
And Mayor Heding?
Yes.
Your motion carries by vote.
Good, thank you. And then staff asked specifically today for feedback on these items. So I'll just look for, hopefully head nods unless Chris tells me we need a motion. Do, would you like to see the addition of a key project for cybersecurity education for staff and council? That's, I support that personally. I'm seeing head nods. Councilmember Heller, looking for your head. Okay. Councilmember Barton and Davis?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So it looks like, yes, I see that hand. Okay, that's a majority support for that. Thank you for bringing that up, by the way. I think that's an excellent idea. And also, don't know, Ms. Watson, if our JPIA folks might assist with that with regard to either information or education.
Yes, we've reached out to them today. They're doing some work to get together training materials for us.
Way ahead of me, thank you. Then you also asked about, let's see, research for Section 115 for pension costs. And you wanted to know if there should be inclusion of the OPEB liability. And I certainly concur with that as a significant part of that. So if I see, I'm seeing head nods. And I see a majority head nods. So it looks like we'll go ahead with that. And I think, let's see. Katie, was there anything else that you needed specific direction on? I don't know if I can.
Bring it up real quick. I think there's one more.
May have missed one.
Assist CFAC with the evaluation of council compensation.
Oh, right, thank you.
Right. That's my policy, to have CFAC look at council compensation. I'd raised the issue yesterday. Again, I think I explained what the rationale for that was. And that's something that I would suggest that we ask CFAC to perform. I see support, looking at heads, yes, okay. I've got majority heads saying yes on that. Appreciate that. And then I think it was Councilmember Addis yesterday. I wanted to follow up on, perhaps it was you, Dawn, that raised it. I am concerned about the water and utility, delinquent bills, not so much in terms of going after people that are delinquent. But I appreciate the information, Katie, that you brought today on potential relief for that with the water and utility assistance bill that's floating out there, although it may be minor. But I'm wondering if we've considered a plan for how we're going to address the deficit, either through forgiveness or reallocation? And this is not me suggesting that we go after people. That's not my intent at all. I'm concerned that as a result of the pandemic, that many people have been injured economically, financially, and that this issue is something that we should probably address. And maybe I'll ask you to respond, Katie.
We've been having, yeah. And I'm sorry, Scott, would you like to?
Yeah, I was gonna say, we've talked internally about staff, about this to staff. And we've actually seen that number come down pretty well. And I think we want to see that number come down on its own as much as we can before we turn to any city funds. Certainly, the federal and state funds, folks could avail themselves of that. And we want to be a good facilitator in that regard. But I think our goal would be to see those numbers come back before we would implement anything. But that's just us talking amongst ourselves. And we haven't, you know, gotten anywhere concrete on that. But again, we've seen that number come down pretty good over the course of the pandemic.
Good, good.
Yeah, and the other issue is that we're, at least I'm unclear right now with the governor's revocation of the orders on June fifteenth, whether any part of the orders about water shut offs or delinquent bills is going to be maintained. And I see Chris just popped up. And so I'll leave it to him to provide any insights he might have.
So it's not entirely clear. But my understanding at this point is that the governor isn't going to be revoking the state of emergency on June fifteenth. The governor pursuant to the emergency powers that presumably will still be in effect after June fifteenth is going to substantially relax, you know, pandemic restrictions throughout the state. I mean, there still will be pandemic restrictions that will be in place pursuant to the emergency order. Now, the governor also issued, has issued, you know, I think it's scores of different emergency orders. So, you know, at some point, those are all going to be, you know, unwound. But June fifteenth is, I believe, going to simply be the dramatic relaxation of the restrictions imposed under the emergency conditions. But the governor imposed the emergency orders under the Emergency Services Act when a state of emergency was declared back in March of last year. I have not heard that the state of emergency will be lifted on June fifteenth. Rather, there's going to be a dramatic relaxation of legal requirements that right now are in place. And it might affect, you know, utilities, it might not. I don't know. Like I said, a lot of folks are scrambling that provide legal counsel to public agencies to know what the governor's going to do other than we have these headlines from spokespeople. I mean, just yesterday, there was another one saying that, yeah, we're probably going to do it. And in September, we're going to revise, you know, review where we're at. So I'm waiting as well to see how this rolls out.
And that includes whether we go back to a place where we're, you know, we're taking a policy stand to look forward and separately look backwards. At some point, I think the city would be wise to reconsider whether it's appropriate to continue the lack of penalties going forward and address what's already happened in a different way. And I don't know what that timing would be based on whatever the governor's concepts of what will happen in June and July and August and September. It's just, it's unclear right now whether the blanket inclusion of policies that impact us as a water agency and a sewer agency will continue to go forward or whether it's going to become a question of local control.
Okay. I think that's good enough. I think we've laid it out as something for further consideration and discussion and look forward to that. The last thing I had that was mentioned briefly yesterday was, and in your write-up, moving, as we talked about, from a ten-year to a five-year financial planning forecast tool. But we also talked about, a number of months ago when we were looking at our tenure plan, that the tool was woefully outdated with regard to items that go into it. And that lends to, in my opinion, bad word, useless, but potentially erroneous financial information in terms of predictions. So wondering what the plan is for reevaluating that tool specifically. And I think we're on board with the five-year plan, but didn't get information on the reevaluation of the tool.
Well, I am with you 100% on needing to pivot from the existing tool. The question about whether it should be a key project or not is one that I overlooked. And I do actually think that it should be a key project. And it should be identified for Sarah to know that that's on the radar screen. And, you know, I've, on my whiteboard, which I'm pointing to, which none of you can see, is, it's got a variety of longer term, kind of middle term and longer term projects. And I definitely think having it be articulated in the key projects is probably a wise idea.
Okay, great, appreciate that very much.
It looked like there was.
Looked like I had some head nods there, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. So that's, basically, I think I captured everything you were asking, Katie, for feedback on, and then the additional item that, or two items that I had. But then again, I'll just open it up. Anything else with regard to direction, counsel, that you'd like to discuss at this time? Councilmember Addis, I see your hand.
I don't know if you're asking direction necessarily, but there was talk about the different tech programs that are being used and moving some of those out of house, so to speak. And I would fully support as many subscription-based kinds of tech programs as possible because I think it just streamlines and alleviates and allows staff to concentrate on things that are more important. And as much as we can go to those services that make sense financially, you know, when it makes sense financially, I just want to voice support for that. And I know Morro Bay has been on a road towards streamlining for quite a while. And so I appreciate the thinking around using kind of out of house. And that's not a ding on anyone that's in the house. I'm positive that anyone, everyone in-house has been doing a phenomenal job. But I know it's just more streamlined and oftentimes a cost-saving to go to subscription-based when you can.
Great, yeah. I'm seeing heads nod, so yes. Thank you for that comment. Looking for any other comments from council with regard to items on the budget and the study session? Okay. Hearing none, again, kudos to staff and Katie, you and your team, Scott, all the department heads, any staff members that were involved. Great document, as we said yesterday, very easy to read. Appreciate the succinct presentation, calling out the very relevant details. And again, thanks so much to our Citizens Finance Advisory Committee for the deep dive that they did and the great questions that were asked that were included in our packet as well. And Katie, I saw you, did you have your hand going up? Yes.
Thanks for giving me the opportunity, Mayor. I just wanted to do two things. One is, I did want to reiterate, if I didn't do so yesterday, or iterate, if I didn't say so yesterday, how much the CFAC's review really made this a better document, really challenges us as staff, which is sometimes a great thing. And sometimes it's trying, but it's good all around. And they just approach this with such rigor, but also a sense of wanting to preserve the moral base that we all love. And so I just wanted to make sure that I express appreciation for their hard work because it really has made our efforts more meaningful and better, I think, at the end of the day. And the last thing is, I just, I wanted again to thank the department heads and all the staff that were involved in creating this, both in finance, but all the departments. It really does take a village, you know, including the department heads, the city attorney, the city clerk, that just everybody has been phenomenal in terms of producing this document. And so there was lots of kudos that I received yesterday, and I really appreciated them and made me feel great. But I also wanted to make sure that I spread the love. You all did as well. But I wanted to take the opportunity to thank them because they've made my time here in Morro Bay much more enjoyable, much more fruitful. And there's so much passion for the city of Morro Bay on your staff that I just wanted to take the opportunity to highlight that as kind of an outsider as well.
Well, thank you, Katie, well-stated. And we're just glad that you're going to be part of our village, not only, not as an employee, but a continued resident. So we'll look forward to seeing you on the walk.
Yeah, definitely. Ellie, too.
Yes. Any further comments, closing statements from council? If not, thank you so much for your time in reviewing this information and taking a couple of days to go over with it. And we'll just go ahead and adjourn, and have a great day. We'll see you next time. Be safe and be well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.